Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting. Council meeting is for Monday, October the 22nd, 2018. The purpose of the meeting is to be handled by our city attorney, and I'll ask that he pick this up at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As councils aware, the purpose of this special meeting is to actually consider five separate resolutions. Each of these resolutions are required as a procedural requirement for acquiring right-of-way for the McCard Road project. And what we will be doing is I'm going to recommend to council that, because state law does require that each one of these captions be read out loud in its entirety, I'm going to recommend that I go through, state the resolution number, and then the caption for each one. And after I've read through those, if the council would at that time, if the council sees fit to go ahead and say so moved, and then we can have a motion in a second for that, so that these five resolutions can be considered. Again, these are right-of-way. This is, each one represents right-of-way that is required for the McCard Road project. There will be a total of about eighty-three parcels that the city is acquiring, and so over the next several meetings, we will have different properties being brought forth, where there has not been a resolution as to the property value. And as a result, the next step in order to take, to go through the process of determining value through the courts, we have to go through this process of passing these resolutions. And each one of these resolutions declares a public necessity for the acquisition of that right-of-way. And so before I start reading these, I wanted to find out, first of all, if the council had any questions or any concerns about going through it procedurally in this manner. If not, then I'll go ahead and start reading the, each resolution with its number and the caption out loud for the council.
All right. That's good. Thank you.
If you'll bear with me, here we go. The first one is Resolution Number 2018-204. Resolution of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the McCard Road Extension Project, Macalla Road to Cullen Parkway, being a 0.2478 acre parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey, abstract 234, Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, being out of that certain lot 14, Section 9, Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof filed in Volume 2, pages 23 through 24, Brazoria County plat records, and being out of that certain culled 1/2 lot 14, as described in a deed executed on December 19th, 1955, from J.R. Herridge to J.H. Klopp, et tuks, as recorded under Vol. 640, page 307, Brazoria County deed records, for the construction and maintenance of road utility and drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain. Now the next resolution. Resolution 2018-205. A resolution, City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the McCard Road Extension Project, Macalla Road to Cullen Parkway, being Part 1, a .6835 acre parcel of land, being out of W. Dobson Survey, abstract 187, and being out of that certain culled 17.8243 acres tract, as described in a deed dated executed on August 2nd, 1994, from Arthur Frederick Mahoney to Mary Mahoney, as recorded in Brazoria County Clerk's File Number 94-029148 of the Official Public Records of Brazoria County, in Part 2, a 5.132 acre parcel of land, being out of W. Dobson Survey, abstract 187, and being out of that certain culled 17.8243 acre tract, as described in a deed executed on August 2nd, 1994, from Arthur Frederick Mahoney to Mary Mahoney, as recorded in Brazoria County Clerk's File Number 94-029148 of the Official Public Records of Brazoria County, for the construction and maintenance of road utility drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. The third resolution will be R. 2018-206. A resolution of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the McCard Road Extension Project, Macalla Road to Cullen Parkway, being a 0.2212 acre parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey, abstract 243, Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, and being out of Lot 33, Section 19, Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof filed in Volume 02, pages 23 through 24, Brazoria County plat records, and out of a culled 2.754 acre tract of land, as described in a deed executed on April 24th, 1987, from Veterans Affairs to Chuck Goodgun, et tuks, recorded in Volume 87-411, paged 826 of the Official Public Records of Brazoria County, for the construction, maintenance, and maintenance of road utility and drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. The fourth resolution would be R. 2018-207. A resolution of the City Council, the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the McCard Road Extension Project, Macalla Road to Cullen Parkway, being a 0.2937 acre parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey, abstract 242, Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, and being out of Lot 33, Section 19, Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof filed in Volume 2, pages 23 through 24, Brazoria County plat records, and out of a culled 3.0 acre tract of land, as described in a deed executed October 18th, 1967, from J.R. Johnson, et tuks, to Ned E. Williamson, et tuks, recorded in Volume 983, paged 918, Brazoria County deed records, for the construction and maintenance of road utility and drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. And the fifth resolution would be R. 2018-208. A resolution, City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the McCard Road Extension Project, Macalla Road to Cullen Parkway, being a .7305 acre parcel of land located in the F.B. Drake Survey, abstract 505, Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, and being out of Lot 30, Section 10, Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Homes Company subdivision, according, excuse me, I lost my place here. Where was I at? Lost my page. Out of Lot 30, Section 10, Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof filed in Volume 2, pages 22, 23 through 24, Brazoria County plat records, and being out of that certain five acres, for a calculated total of 9.999 acre tract, as described in a deed executed on May 22nd, 1979, from Joe D. Wheeler, trustee, et al., to Thomas C. Koller, et tuks, as recorded under Volume 1459, paged 597, Brazoria County deed records, for the construction and maintenance, excuse me, for the construction and maintenance of road utility and drainage improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the second on our table, and it's for the discussion of the council at this point. Does our staff have any wrap-up comments at this point?
No, Mayor, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. We do have Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero. Councilmember Owens and Councilmember Reed is absent from the chambers.
Countdown has turned, and we are now, did Councilmember Owens show up at this point? Three, four, five, six, okay. We are moved to item three on our agenda, which will allow me to adjourn this at 6:12. We will, council meeting will start at 6:30, but we have an introductory of a guest to our nation, and it will start about 6:15, I believe it is, yeah.
Selected very prestigious program as part of the State Department outreach, and it's called the Southeast Asia Young Leadership Program. And he is one of two people, individuals from Thailand, I believe there's twenty from Southeast Asian countries in total, that went to Washington DC and spent a week in orientations there. And then they go out for a month and spend time seeing US local government up close and personal, firsthand action. So, Natapol's been with us, and his focus has been on some of our work with green space and parks, and he's going to talk a little bit about that. But one of the neat things, I think, is it gives us a chance to show off the Pearland community and get some perspective. He's been on Facebook active, sharing some of his takeaways. We've had him fed very well, so I think he's put on a couple of pounds from what he's not used to, Texas food. But the staff has been fantastic and very generous with their time in showing off. So, if I could, Mayor, Natapol's got a little brief, couple slides, just to give you a little background from his perspective, and I'll learn a little bit about where he's coming from. So, can I have the podium and share your presentation, so?
Good afternoon, sorry, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great honor for me to be here with all of you and have a chance to visit Pearland, the beautiful land, and to interview myself today. I'm Natapol Chumtulagan from Bangkok, Thailand. I'm a government officer for the Aptham Ban district. I work for Bangkok Metropolitan Administration, yep, and I'm a local government officer. You can call me that. I did my presentation, it's not look formal, because I would like to, you, all of you, feel free to speak with me, okay? The picture you see in the, on the presentation, the left one is my when I was young, and the other is my lifestyle. So this is my country. I come from Thailand, and Thailand is, we have the motto, it means the land of smile. It means when you go to Thailand, visit to Thailand, people always smile to you. And we have 27 provinces and 67 million populations. So Bangkok Metropolitan Administration, we have a goal to make Bangkok safe in every aspect, at free pollution, crime, drug, accident, natural disaster, and also we work for toward the better quality of life. We also need to turn the green, return Bangkok gray city to the green city. That's why my aspect are to come here, to bring back the best solution and your best policy here, and to suggestion to my new coming, it's my new leader in the future So Bangkok structure is, we have the, because we are the special province, we separate from the others province, we have their own regulations, we have their own law, our own law, and also we have the governor of Bangkok, this is directly from the prime minister, from the governor directly to the permanent secretary of BMA, and it works for district level. We have fifty district level, it's mean district office directly to permanent secretary also. We don't under by the order department, yep, but the order department can send the project to us to cooperate together. So this is my organized chart, this is mine. We also have the highlight of the work to responsibility. On the left side, we start from the, the highlight of the disease control, and the second is the food safety control. For me, it's factory sanitation, and also inspect about the occupational health also in Bangkok. And last but not least, is administration. Even though I'm work for the factory sanitations and occupational health, but I also include in the, my responsibility area, we also, I also inspect for food, food inspection, food safety, health control in my subdivision area also. We have full subdivision area. This is my office in Bangkok, yeah. I'm the environmental and sanitation officer from environmental and sanitation sections at Batum Ban district office. I worked for here eight years. So this is my, when I inspected, inspector for the food safety. This is my job about the monitoring, about the environment, pollution, and safety control in my district area. This is, I work for the control about the drug and tobacco control, because I work for the district level. I have a lot of laws and laws, and this is of my group to do also. And yeah, as I mentioned, you, I inspect for the drug in the PR, and also make the campaign for the customer and the entrepreneur, is my district area. And this is my work experience. I used to work for the ministry of public health, and after that, I moved to the Batum Ban district office, because of, I would like to close the population, the citizen, and yeah, work for district level for more. For my interest area, I'm interested in environmental and sanitation, urban development, equal city, and my interest topic is the environmental and sustainable policy for urban life and working space in Bangkok context. Because of the, I came from the, Bangkok is the center of the, for my district is the center of Bangkok, it's mean a lot of economic activity, and a lot of the tourism and urban life there. That's why I would like to meet, file out the policy, the best one for the urban life and to preserve the green space, because of, when the Bangkok is grow up, the urban is grow up, we will ignore and to preserving the green space, but the Pearland did the good way. That's why I impressed so much when I came here. And my hobby and the other interesting is about, I would like to play basketball, swimming and tennis, and also I like every kind of music, yeah, that is all. And this, if you guys want to know what about the problem of Bangkok, we have flooding. The serious flooding is happened on the 2011, is the big flooding, and also we have a lack of local transportation quality, lack of green space, traffic congestion, and poverty. But I focusing on lack of green space, because of, if we have a lot of green space, we will have the detention area to absorb the waterway and wetland. I can, we can fix this, we can solve the problem about flooding also. This is the big park in the my district area, we call Lumpinie Park. We have to park in urban area for my district level. It's the, the other thing is belong with university, Chula Longkon University, it's a century park also. If you want to know about this information, you can ask me directly. And how to increase and seeking urban green space, I can summarize for three kind of, we can regeneration, abandoned area, low impact development, and recreational waterfront space also. For the best way, I would like to do like highlight of the regeneration, abandoned area for be the green space in the my district area, and also I would like to preserve the green space in my district area for more. And also for the Pearland, I inserted in the legislation about, or when you cut the tree, you need to put double, or you preserve the tree for highlight of the, if people cannot create a park, you should pay for the city tax. It's mean that you will never lost your green space. I think it's a good idea also. Even though you have a lot of thing you did, it's highlight of the, you also open for the people to listen what you do, what you did in the house you meeting, and also you have a grade for take care, take good care in the edge society. Today I have a chance to see the, you take care for your edge societies, highlight of you have the exercise for them, you have the path for them to have some new society. That's why I really impressed so much and appreciate that for this also. Moreover, you have the kind of the good recycle way and good education center. I hope I can bring back this kind of thing to my Bangkok, and I can implement as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Good.
Yep. Thank you again, Mayor and council, and thank you, Natapol, for being with us. It's been a great experience. He's going to go to Shiverland for two weeks on Saturday, and I guarantee he won't have as good an experience as he had with us in Pearland here for the last two weeks, so thank you again.
Well, I tell you, we certainly have enjoyed visiting with you and learning an awful lot about a very beautiful city and a very nice country. Obviously, you've done a good job. That's wonderful, wonderful. We will start our city council meeting in just a few moments, 6:30. We will start our city council meeting in just a few moments, six thirty. The twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Moving in our agenda, I'm instantly, I'm using same agenda that you probably have in your hands. Item one is called order, which I just did. Two is the invocation and pledge allegiance. I'm going to have, if you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation night by our council member Andrea Hernandez and Mayor Pro Tim. Trent Perez will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag, honor of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. One of the items here on my roll call is that we'd identify the presence of our council. We are council member Reed, which is vacant to my right, is not, is out of the country. And the one on the far left there is Woody Owens, who I guess is, will be here in just a few minutes. He may be caught in the line of voting, which means that he needs to get the other way pretty fast. With that information in the record, let's move down to item number four on our agenda, which is citizen comments. I'll ask council member of Mayor Pro Tim Perez to introduce these individuals.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've had several people requesting opportunity to speak. Most of them are for a specific item. I'll ask y'all to speak when that item comes up on the agenda. Uh, one is for general comment. So if Mr. William Moody would like to come up now, Mr. William Moody. If you'll come up to the microphone, sir, please state your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when about thirty seconds is left.
Uh, my name is William A. Moody. I live on San Antonio Street. I built all the houses there. Uh, I've gotten quite a few letters in the mail from the code enforcement people. Uh, they weren't returning my phone calls. I even went to the department and asked, uh, I would like to talk to somebody, a young lady that was there. Uh, in the picture that they sent me, there's two tires that I picked up off the street. I don't, somebody dropped them there. I don't know where they came from. And I left them there for a couple of days thinking that somebody would come back and get them, which they didn't. And they included it in the code enforcement letter they sent to me. They didn't return, and when I went over the code enforcement department, they, I met with a young lady over there and she more or less said that was my problem and I need to dispose of the tires myself, which I thought was a little strange, but it's hard to where it came from. Didn't make, I got these letters in the mail. None of them are signed. All of them are just telling me that I'm breaking the law, yes. Since I can't get hold of anybody, I'm just here, I came to city council night to complain about that. That's all there is.
Good.
That's all I have for now, Mayor.
That's all you have? Okay, let's move in our agenda to item five, which is public hearings tonight, which we do not have one. Consent agenda, which consists tonight of items A through S. And I'll ask council member Carbone if he will present those for our consideration.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item B as in Bravo.
May I?
Item B as in Bravo from the consent agenda.
E as in boy.
Yes, sir.
Any other item be pulled from the agenda? I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through S, the exception of B, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comment from council? Very none, Mr. Secretary. We have motion second on floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero with councilmember Owens absent from the chambers.
Moving in our agenda to item B, councilmember Carbone, would you?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R. two thousand and eighteen dash one seven five, so moved.
Second.
We have motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an item for a long-term electrical contract for the city. Mr. Branson's been working with the provider on this and provide some ranges on the potential upsides and not as good sides for the city financially. So I don't know if you can just overview that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. As you may recall, we brought this back to you in September to have a conversation. As you all may recall, we currently have an electricity contract that expires in two thousand and twenty-four. What we're proposing this evening is to bring back to you an agreement that would allow us to extend that for another five-year term period. What we're proposing is a total renewable solar energy, contrary to the current energy, which is standard electric provision. And that contract would go for another five years. Our current contract that's in place through two thousand and twenty-four, the current rate is zero point three nine. This solar contract would lower it for another four years below our current rate of zero point three seven. Just for reference purposes, one of the things that you all talked about when we discussed this the last time, you, some of you may have been concerned about locking in this rate. What happens if it goes lower? And then there were others that were concerned, if we don't lock it in, what happens if it goes higher? So in your packet, you have some information that states that the seven-year low was zero point three four, excuse me, the seven-year low was zero point three four five. What we're proposing is zero point three seven. So if it were to happen to go down to that all-time seven-year low, then we would lose if we locked it in potentially, if it went to that all-time low, potentially a hundred thousand dollars less than what we'd be locking it in at. Conversely, if it went up to the seven-year high during this time period and we don't lock it in, we could be losing as much savings as a million dollars a year. Fact of the matter is, the current rate is zero point three seven. We believe that this will go down, excuse me, zero point three nine. We believe it'll go down to zero point three seven. You lock that in for another five years, you're going to save a hundred thousand a year. So right now, the decision is before you, do you want to extend an agreement for solar energy for five years at a lower rate than we currently have or leave it where it is and not take action at this time? That's all. Thank you. Be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Council, do you have any question or comment at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a representative from, was it Traditions here?
Yes, sir.
I guess, could you come up? I know you answered a lot of questions last time. We've had a few follow-up discussions. Can you give us an update on the other cities or entities that were looking to participate? And kind of what the status is of that?
Uh, yes, sir. And thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to present and speak to everybody again, to give you a little bit of an update on the group that we had. Uh, some of the meetings that have taken place so far, we had initially eight entities that were in this group and we're looking at several different variables. One is, what is the cost to everybody in the group if everybody acts together? Uh, and we've got some, some numbers to back up where that looks like right now. The only entity out of the eight that is definitively out is Wharton I S D, which I believe was the smallest entity in the group. Nakadochus County and City of Galveston, both, the last conversations that they've had about this, they potentially want to wait until next year to look at this. And then the city tonight obviously is discussing this. Missouri City is still discussing, City of Mesquite is still discussing, though the conversations that we've had, they've been very much wanting to move forward. And, and really the decisions that we're seeing relates to, as this was presented, which is a long-term electricity contract. And, and what we're doing, what we've always done is to look at all the variables of this, to look at what the cost would be if the city acted by itself, what the cost would be if it was aggregated with everybody and what the cost would be if we looked at just traditional ground power as opposed to green. So we continue to look at all those options so that if the city does decide to move forward, it can make a decision in its best interest as far as what type of contract it wants
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions that I could answer?
So the, the, the cost, the cost is dependent on how many people are in the group, right? The rate?
Um, yes and no. The, the cost to the large entities has stayed fairly stable. So what we've seen with the cost, for instance, for City of Pearland, for City of Mesquite, whether the other entities are in the group or not in the group, we've seen, for instance, the last numbers that we ran, there is only a four thousand dollar difference annually between if the city were to act on its own or if it were to be with everybody else. So from the City of Pearland standpoint, the, the size and membership of the aggregation really has little impact on what the city's rate.
So I get, this is kind of a question maybe for you and for staff. You know, with a, with a term that doesn't expire to two thousand and twenty-four, what is the advantage to the City of Pearland? What is the necessity for us to engage in a contract extension when we're this far out from the termination point?
I'll answer the first couple of questions and then Bob, you can join in. There is no necessity right now. I felt like from my perspective, there was an opportunity where we could definitely save about a hundred thousand dollars a year above and beyond what our current contract is. So I felt like it's, it was important to bring it to you for your discussion. There's no requirement to lock it in at this particular time, but what it will do is if we do lock it in for another five years after two thousand and twenty-four, it will be less than our current rate. And our current rate is very good. You may recall that our current rate is half what it used to be a year ago this time.
I appreciate that. I think that's the difficulty for me is that, but, and this is the reason why I, I don't support us moving forward with this. I think, I appreciate the staff and our consultants participating in this, and I see the merits of the argument. But similar to what we talked about before, if we end up in a contract that won't even begin until after nearly everybody here on, that's on council is off, I think we're locking the hands of a future council. We, what is referenced is a seven-year, a seven-year history, but we're talking about eleven-year extension. So I have a difficult time accepting this as relevant information because we don't know what's going to happen in two thousand and twenty-three. It could be that electricity costs, for whatever reason, have gone down significantly and we're locked at point three seven when everyone else is at point two one. It may sound silly now based on the seven-year history, but we don't know. And as you said, a year ago, we were double. Uh, now we're half. It could be half by two thousand and twenty-three. It could be back to seventy-nine cents. We don't know. But I think it's more important that this, this decision with a contract for council that's going to be here in two thousand and twenty-three is a decision for them. So that's why I'm going to vote no.
Any other comment or question?
I think it's a, a good idea and a good thing for the city to lock in at this rate. I, I think history is going to show that energy prices are going to rise. We've only seen them drop a couple of times, but historically, they've been on the rise. And I think the, the downside to locking in is far away by the risk of prices going up. So I'm all for it.
And I, I can understand Councilman Perez's argument and I, I struggle with it, but, but when I look at the risk versus reward, the, the risk is prices go back to just what we've seen in the seven, past seven years, and it's costing us a million dollars a year. Or, or that's our reward. And the risk is they drop even further. Well, we're never going to have completely free energy, so we can, we can put a floor on it at some level. I understand your point about using a seven-year high, seven-year low. We needed something to look at to be able to quantify it, in, in my opinion. And I asked him if I could lock in my, my, both business and personal rates right now for the next thirty years, I would at these prices, but we can't. But we can for the city. I get entering into a long contract is kind of hamstringing the future councils, but I, you know, going back to our water rights, I appreciate being hand, handstrong on those in the, in the past councils have done the right thing, and I think this is the right move. So I understand your trepidation, but I, I think it's the right move.
I respect y'all's opinion. I think I'm, I'm still holding to, I think this is a decision for council in two thousand and twenty-three and not for us.
Yeah, I, I don't like that it's so far out, but I mean, every year I do the same thing. I look at the energy rates when I try to get electric provider for my personal use. So I, I think this is the right move. I don't like that it's, you know, a long way out and it's a little bit longer contract than what I would like to see, but it, it's saving us, you know, a lot of money and I, I think it's the right move to do.
So I have a question on the one hundred percent renewable portion of it. Is there, why has that come down so much? Because it's my understanding, at least from, I've negotiated in the past for my business, the renewable option has always been higher. So why, can you maybe give me some, because I'm trying to look forward. Is there something that these will continue to come down and?
Well, I think one of the, one of the key aspects to this is that the, the approach that we're looking at involves contracting with an actual solar generation facility as opposed to putting physical panels up on city property or city buildings. Uh, those types of projects are still always going to be significantly more expensive than traditional, traditional power. And with the solar approach that this is taking, you're dealing with a generation facility that it's kind of a chicken and egg type of situation. They're looking for long-term agreements. they build that, then the ongoing costs are much cheaper. And probably the biggest issue to all of it over the years has just simply been the increase in very, very cheap solar panels.
So you just said something kind of interesting to me. You said that the ongoing costs are much cheaper. Does that mean that, this may be out of your area of expertise, you may not be able to speak to this, but does that mean that you think that the more solar energy we have or generating plants that we have in the future, you anticipate then that the cost would be much cheaper as we move more into renewable energy in the future versus these upfront kind of startup costs?
That's a very interesting question. I mean, that's getting into the, into the crystal ball type of scenario, but one of the things that we have seen happen, as the solar panel prices went down extremely low. As you know, with the current administration, we started seeing tariffs and other issues on Chinese goods. That has now led to a situation where any new facilities that are, that are being built, as opposed to tying into one that has just recently been built over the last few years, is looking at increased costs because of those panels. Obviously, those tariffs can go away in the future, but with any kind of facility like this, whether you're talking wind or whether you're talking solar, you're always going to have an initial capital expenditure of building it. And then depending on what type of facility it is, really determines what the ongoing costs are. You've got maintenance of the generation facility, but anytime you talk about solar or wind, those ongoing costs are always going to be less than a traditional fossil-fuel-powered power plant. I mean, it's difficult to project what will happen in the future, but that same type of model will exist with any type of either solar or wind facility where you have an initial capital expenditure and then the ongoing cost or, or less. But I think to answer the question as far as really what's led to that cost getting down on par with brown power, it really has just been an increase in investment in these generation facilities and the very cheap panels. So it's our expectation that future generation facilities that'll be built off of terror, or off of panels with a higher tariff, or panels built in the U.S. are going to be, are going to be higher cost.
Mayor? Just, do we have anybody from TXU here? Good, I can say what I want to then. One was up T M L last week, I guess it was, and I stopped by the booth there for TXU, and I said, hey, tell me something about this, solar days and free nights. So we kept sitting there talking a little bit, and I said, listen, I said, yo, give me the skinny on it. I'm thinking about doing it. He said, Woody, said, don't do it. Solar is higher right now, and it's going to continue to grow. And he said, there's no way that you're going to save any money if you go to solar days and, and energy-free at night, you know, free at night. So I took him at his word. And so I think, you know, for us on this, I think it's a good thing for us to go through and, and look at it and do it. I mean, solar's going to be high, and I worked for a company, we did 400 and something acres of wind out in California, out there, and, yeah, it was in California while we done it. And it was extremely costly in that area out there for that. So we've done this once before when we're locking in, and I think it was a good deal for us then, and I think it's a good deal for us now.
So, when will we know about the other cities? Is there a deadline for them to make any decisions? If we come, is there any risk if we're first in, we approve it tonight, to Galveston, Nacogdoches, that they, they punted for a year, they decide they're not going to get in, maybe some other cities follow, we're the only ones standing? Is there any risk for us if it does get accepted without any other contributions?
But based on all the numbers that we've run, as I mentioned, the last scenario that we looked at, and we've looked at several even since last meeting in here, the most that we've seen as far as a delta between the city's price on its own, and the city's price even with the aggregation that I just mentioned, was $4,000. So I don't see any scenario where there would be an adverse situation, the city deciding to move forward, whether it even turned out to be the city doing its own thing by itself, whether it turned out to be in tandem with several others.
Do you have a comment or question?
So we approved tonight, what are the next steps? How long do we wait on the other entities before we say, hey, we're just going to go it alone?
The, the last meeting that, that we're aware of that's actually put down is in November, and right before, I believe the week before Thanksgiving. So at that point in time, we'll definitely know exactly who's in and who's out. And that's stretching a little bit the timeframe that we were potentially looking at, which is making a decision between late October and mid-November. I think it's probably, more likely puts the feedback and the decision-making process on moving forward the contract between mid-November and early December.
And just to clarify, is that decision processed back on us? I mean, my understanding is, once we vote, we're done.
Well, I, I mean, decision in terms of actually executing the contract, bringing the contract forward to have that executed.
So you're saying this is only giving you the opportunity to negotiate on our behalf at this point?
It allows him to negotiate, and then you're authorizing, moving forward, getting the best possible rate at or about 0.37. And then, once that information is locked in, then they'll bring the contract back to us, and the city manager will execute, will execute the contract. This is approval to move forward.
The moving forward is contingent, then, upon you finding or negotiating this rate of 3.7. Is that correct? If we can't hit that target, then it's...
Yeah, I think I put in there 0.375 is what we're looking at as a, as a maximum.
Counsel, have another question or comment? Have you had to wrap up at this point?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a, back before the conversation started, we had a motion second on the floor. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed four to two.
Information registered, let's now move into our agenda. Item six on our agenda, which is matters removed from considered agenda, and we just worked through that right there. New business item one, Councilmember Perez, would you present this for our consideration?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-214, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. The city, many years ago, a couple decades, embarked upon a tax increment, rezone, reinvestment zone, number two, the Shadow Creek project. And one of the financing mechanisms to make that happen also involved another entity, the Development Authority of Pearland, which is responsible for issuing bonds, financing back to entities that have gone through all the steps and hurdles and are due reimbursement. The first ones up is the primary developer, and we're nearing the end of that obligation, but it's been very successful and a win-win all around in terms of the development and the financing and the value that's been created on the ground there. So tonight is an annual review of, of what's available in terms of capacity for those paybacks. And there was a placement this morning for the bond sale, and our bond advisors are going to give a report on that. And the interest rate that we actually served up, the Development Authority met this afternoon and endorsed all of these actions, so it's here for your final action. So John Warbuck will summarize the numbers and give us an overview going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mayor, councilmembers, John Warbuck, BOK Financial Securities. On the screen, we have the presentation that we presented to the Development Authority of Pearland this afternoon at 4:00 with the results of the sale. Just let me see, wait. That's right. There we go. On the first page of the presentation is the current market review. This is the bond buyer index. Again, it's the weekly average that we show you every time we're out here. I do want to point out, if you look on the far right, the last couple of weeks, the market's been a little volatile. We've seen interest rates rise anywhere about 20, 25 basis points of the last month, month and a half. It's a result of the economy doing well, it's a result of Treasury rates, obviously moving up, 10-year Treasury rates moved up to almost the all-time high, or not all-time high, but higher than it's been the last decade or so. As a result, the market's been a little volatile, and we did take bonds a day, and we did very well, we did better than this. So let me go through that, and that's on the next page. We sent a term sheet and a bid sheet to 27 banks, financial institutions across Texas and across the nation soliciting interest in the Development Authority's bonds. We received bids this morning at 10:00 a.m., and we received four bids, a low bid coming from Regions Capital Advantage of a 3.41%. Regions, side note, Regions actually owns four of the series of bonds and about 57% of the outstanding Development Authority of Pearland bonds. So they're very interested in the credit, they like the credit, and they always bid very aggressively on the, on the bonds. Next page, this is the final sources and uses. Based on the interest rate provided by Regions, we're able to structure the bonds to sell $5,835,000 in bonds, less expenses of about $166,000, equals the total proceeds for developer reimbursement, $5,669,000. All cost interest rate was at 3.95%, and average life was 6.164 years. With your approval, we will close this bond issue and deliver the funds for developer reimbursement on November 20th, at which point we'll be completely closed, and the developer will be reimbursed that amount of $5,669,000. The bonds, again, are structured based on a cash flow from the participating entities of the TERs, and this is the principal interest that we were able to structure. And actually, I'll flip to page five real quick, kind of hard to see all these small numbers on the screen, but based on the capacity we can issue, this is the most we can issue to maximize the reimbursement to the developer. They're in green. The participants are City of Pearland, Brazoria County, and the Fort Bend County, based on the increments, increase of the base year back in 1998. If you all approve this tonight, again, we close on the 20th. And again, earlier tonight, the Development Authority did approve this bond sale. And with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions about the financing. Mr. Witty and Ms. Humphries, your co-bond counselor here, answering questions about the documents we're asking you to approve, legal documents. But again, if you have any questions about the financing, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Have any additional comments?
Just to note that the short term on this debt, six years, it ends when the TERs ends, and that's mandatory. So it's a little unusual, but we're getting near the close of this and looking forward to, you know, getting the developer paid back or paid off, and then we can move into some of the other LFAs, letter of financing agreements. So, and the city's in line for some of that as well, and then we've got some other public projects to get going off as well.
The item was discussed in the Development Authority meeting, and I believe it did pass by four to zero.
Yes, sir.
Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, have any further comments?
I guess an item to note is, this presentation we just saw is updated as compared to what was distributed in the council agenda online. Is that correct, staff?
I believe that's correct. I believe we had the initial numbers we initially projected, and rates have moved up a little bit since we did this back in October 1.
Okay. But what was presented tonight in the meeting is the updated true final numbers.
That's correct. This is true final numbers based on the bids we received today. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So that accounts for about $200,000 delta.
It's $201,000 difference. Yes, sir.
That's good.
Just for, just for my own curiosity, and please forgive my ignorance on how we're managing this, the TERs financing for this, but what is preventing us from bonding the remainder of what is owed to the developer, and particularly when we know that there's a trend for rates going up?
We are limited by whatever the values are within the TERs itself, and right now, there's three participants we can bond against, the city, counties, two counties, Fort Bend and Brazoria County. So we get an estimate of value each July, we plug your models to find out what the difference between the base year, this year. That difference is what we can bond against based on the agreement and the participating tax rates. So that numbers derive based on that difference in values, and so we can bond up to that amount and nothing more.
So we're just looking at a yearly basis? What can we get bonded out? What can we get over to the, there would be no ability for us to try and take advantage of the, the interest rates at this point?
Fortunately, there's, we cannot bond against any more than we did today. We're maximizing what we can do each year.
And roughly, I don't know if this is a question for staff or for you, but how many more years do we have until this is theoretically, how many more years do we have until this is paid off?
Till everybody's paid off?
Well, until the developers reimburse, and then we can, we can take that against projects.
It's, well, there's different, depends on how fast we grow. The faster we grow, the faster it'll be paid off, the slower we go, the slower, assuming no growth in 2025. If no growth and just, I guess, very small growth, no growth, with the portion that we receive from Alvin and the Peace School District, it's all cash, we can't bond against that portion.
Yeah.
Six and a half, $7 million each year, that will pay that off in 2025.
Thank you. And thank you, Alan.
Any other question or comment from council?
I just want to make sure I understand something. You're saying that the maximum debt that they can incur is based on the taxable value of the TERs zone? And are we, are we maxed out based on our taxable value with the debt we currently have?
Right now, yes, sir. Based on the July 1, 2018 values, yes.
So the only way the TERs could incur any more debt would be for the taxable values to go up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So that's what we've done every year, is values go up, we issue the debt that, that we can finance. More of the discussion that was having tonight, since we're getting to short-term bonds, we're 11 years out, this could be one of the last bond issues that the Development Authority of Pearland issues, because the, the cost of our financial advisor and the bond council are starting to make the interest rate higher than the developers that we're paying off. So developers, we're paying off, historically, have been, call it 6.5%, 7%. We can issue debt at 3% and pay off 7, that makes sense. But as that, that adjusted interest rate is above what the developers are charging, at some point, we'll just sit here and take all the increment and pay off the, the debt that we have.
So it's the advisor's fault?
Your words, not mine.
Councilmember Carbone, can I, can I kind of add to that, if you don't mind? Traditionally, when you get shorter debt, your interest rate goes down, but you have less time to amortize it. So the cost, or I guess the amount you can amortize goes smaller as you get closer to the shorter term. So even though the small interest rate, you're not going to be able to generate as much proceeds in the future if, if values aren't growing fast enough. So we may have one or more, maybe, maybe two bond issues between now and the end of the TERs, but I'm not going to count on it unless value just skyrocket in one year where we can actually generate enough revenue where we can do a bond issue over $5 or $6 million.
Any other comments from council? Here and then, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, new business item number two. Councilmember Hernandez, would you do the honor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-203, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. We are off and running in our new fiscal year and implementing our capital improvement program. One of the projects that we've been looking forward to with the community is a, a new standalone public library, a second library for the City of Pearland citizens. Libraries are built and furnished and by the city, but then Brazoria County library system actually operates those, so it's a good partnership from that standpoint. But if we want to add a library facility, the city's going to have to get that constructed. And so we've identified, and council's seen that, in our capital improvement program for a new library, there's actually been land that's been designated within the Shadow Creek Master Plan, off of Shadow Creek Parkway on the north side there for this facility. And what's before you tonight is the engineering, I'm sorry, the design to initiate that project, to start to get the concepts and bring to reality something that we can eventually bring for construction. Should note that also in the TERs, and we've discussed this, that this is one of the projects that we'd like to see, and council's approved a new budget for the TERs, that that would actually pay back for this project, reimburse the city for its expenses if we're, if that value continues to grow like we anticipate, et cetera, for the next 10 years here. So as far as the contract goes tonight, we're considering... So as far as the contract goes tonight for consideration, we solicited professional service proposals, got about a dozen proposals back, interviewed three of the top firms and scored those. And the highest-ranked firm that we're recommending is PGAL. We have been working in concert with Bezora County Library staff, we'd have to operate this, and they're in sync with us in terms of this recommendation and ask for consideration so we can begin the next step on this project.
Counselor, have any question or comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple issues. One, I guess the largest, in terms of the design and kind of programming, are we looking at, or can we look at some way that we'll have more community space out there on the west side? I'm nowhere near an expert, but I've heard some ideas of the rolling-type shelves so the, it can be repurposed into some sort of community room and then moved back. And I guess is this the time that we're looking into that? And I just want to make sure we've got open communications with our board. Earlier in the consent agenda, we pointed some folks to the library board, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page so we don't jump up and say, here's your designed library board. Good luck.
Right. So this is obviously the second firm that'll go with us to do those focus groups and work with the staff and the interest groups, the advisory board, et cetera, trying to share out the options and the pros and cons and the costs and get you back some options and parameters for recommended designs. So this will kick that off. Here that we need to, you know, cast a wide net, community space, there's all kinds of needs, and trying to filter that all down will be part of the process.
Okay. And then also, it looks like we're going to be doing the, or pursuing a construction manager at risk. Is there anything through this process we can, any way we can design it to make sure that we continue to try to support our local small business trades so that we don't, I guess, you know, time and time again, we can talk and see about the economic impact of keeping our tax dollars local. So anyway, I just want to make mention of that through the process, and not necessarily this one, but our future CM at risk.
Yeah, I don't know that construction manager risk approach would, you know, change or inhibit that in any way. So, you know, whatever we have in terms of local preferences and making that clear, you know, I would, this just be, you know, construction manager risk might actually make it easier for more firms to be accessible and, you know, rather than, you know, just getting lost in the general contractor, to see who those subs are and look at those directly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. One, is there a representative of PGAL here? Okay. So I would generally say, and bear in mind, this is my industry, so I know it pretty well, I think we're on the high side with respect to the fee on here. Not so far out of bounds, I think it's objectionable, but certainly enough for me to feel comfortable saying, for this fee, I'm going to expect a high level of performance from y'all, because I think, again, it's just on the top end. So I know y'all have a good reputation, I trust y'all are going to do a good job. This project is something that I've fought for for a while, so because it's important to me and because I know that we're on the top end, I'm expecting a high level of performance from y'all. With respect to the CM at risk, I think that we're doing a great job by moving to this contractor selection model. I think it gives us the best opportunity as a city to control budget and select contractors that will work well with our consultants. But I do think Member Carbone has made a couple of points that I think that we need to follow up with. One, you know, we want to make sure that we have good community space out there. I know that's something that I prioritize and something we lack in that area. You know, I wouldn't necessarily be a fan of movable shelves as much as I would, area that is dedicated as meeting space for the citizens that live out there to congregate, or HOA meetings, or any other community meetings without having to pay for it, because that's really their only option right now on the west side of 288. So I think the project is extremely important. I do think, oh, for that reason, I also think, to echo what Member Carbone said, I would like us to try and find a way to reach out to some of the contractors that are local Pearland companies. Since we're not awarding the construction contract for this, we're only rewarding the design. But later, we do have a CMAR for the fire station. We had some local contractors that bid that they just didn't perform well. You know, if we're not, maybe give them an opportunity to try and have a better opportunity to score better. You know, if they're not, if they're just not ready to do it, or they can't cut the mustard, I think that's fine. But, you know, we, for projects that are this large and mean this much money, I'd rather be spending the money locally than spending it for somebody who's on the north side of Houston, or maybe even, not even local to the Houston area. So that's all I have, Mayor.
I think one thing we need to look at when we design that is that currently, they're the two most-used libraries in Bezora County. And Pearland is a library-using community. And as a result, we had to build our, one across from City Hall, a little smaller than we would like to have because of the funding issue at that time, that we've expanded it a little bit. Want to make sure that we kind of anticipate the growth out in that area and make sure that we build it where we can, obviously, we're going to probably have to expand it as we grow, because we're growing so fast and the people who use libraries use them. Like the one across the street over there, already had about over 1,000 people voting over today. So that's something I think we need to look, be careful of. Thing, it's a county library, and as such, it means that people from Manville and Alvin can use it as well. And there are a lot of people just south of us, in the south of Pearland area, that would be an easy trip to go to a library. So that's something we need to keep in mind. And I think the guys that you're working with are attuned to that issue, because they have the same problem with other libraries in the Gulf Coast area. Counselor, have any further questions, or staff have any wrap-up comments at this one?
I do, Mayor. In the presentation, the fee of $962,170 states that 7.5% of the total construction cost, and that's in line with industry standards. When you add on these four add-ons here at over 1.3 million, puts us up to 10.5% of the total cost. Are we still in line with industry standards here? And are these normal add-ons in this type of project?
Robert, go with that.
Councilman Mayor and Council, yes, that is correct. We're looking in the magnitude of where we're at, where we have those specialty items, those are to be authorized if necessary, as we see fit. That's in it, that would be in addition to the $900,000. And with regards to the construction phase services, that's less than 2% of the total construction cost for that, to be able to do the RFIs, do the submittal reviews, do overall participation when that goes to construction. So yes, we do believe that those are in line with what we're seeing and what we're experiencing.
I guess his next question would be for Darren. Does the government code allow us to select the manager at risk prior to the selection of the architect?
No, it does not. We have to select an architect first and then go through a process.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comment or comment?
Counselor? Whitty?
I'm just glad to see that we're finally getting, we're getting to the point where we can put a facility out there that's going to handle the clientele out there. I mean, they're in a smaller building. This is the second move that they've been to, and they've already outgrown that one. So I'm glad to see that we're able to put up a bigger facility for all the people that visit that library out there.
Owens?
Construction manager at risk. Do we have a little definition on that? Because the way that I've done construction manager at risk for about 40 years, back and forth, the PGAL would report to the construction manager at risk.
So let Robert talk about that process. And we're, as council approved, going forward with that on Station 8, and there's been some references to that associated with this library. So Robert can talk about how this contract fits in with that and what would happen next.
Councilman Owens and Mayor and Council, the aspect of construction manager at risk is more of a triangle aspect, where you have the owner at the top, you have a contract associated with that with the designer, whether that be an architect or an engineer. And then the owner has a contract with the construction organization, and they work in tandem together. The style that you're kind of referencing is a design-build, where the owner then has a contract with the contractor, and the consultant works for the contractor more than in line. This is a partnership agreement that we need to work together, and that's why it forms that, what I'll say is a triangle more than a linear aspect.
Yeah, most of the companies, if they're doing a design bill, they would not, they would back out of it. They wouldn't do a construction manager at risk. And I know that Renswood had a problem with that on one of their facilities over there doing the construction manager at risk. But as a true construction manager at risk, the firm doing the design reports directly to them. And that's not under a design bill contract.
The model that we're following with regards to that is a contract that will, the contractor or the construction manager will have a contract with the city. It's not, the designer does not report to the owner.
Well, under construction manager at risk, you lose a lot of your strength as a client having somebody like that in there as far as being able to work with the designer, PGAL, on that. So I'm happy with that, but then that's fine, I guess. But that's not what I've done nationally on the construction manager at risk. Matter of fact, most of them that I've ever done construction manager at risk, we walked away from, because the design bill has no control, CRM has control over. But anyway, that is another level within the construction aspect of it and within the design aspect of it. As long as the city can stay in control of what you want and how, on your design and oversee that, that's, you know, if that's the way you're doing it, it's, you know, and you feel comfortable with it.
Yes, sir.
It's only about, did you say 2%?
That is the construction services that PGL is proposing, or PGL is proposing for the construction phase services. That's, would be ours to look at SOQs, look at, I'm sorry, not SOQs, I apologize for that, anything for RFIs, anything for submissions on submittals.
It's not a full construction inspection then?
We have our own construction inspection group that we've been building in-house.
Okay.
Member Owens, I'd just say, I've done a few CM at risk projects. It's trending particularly on the public side, and I've had pretty real good success with it.
Yeah. There's two different levels in that, so that's fine. But, you know, if it's a 2%, that's a very low percentage. Usually a construction inspection, it's about 6% to 7%. So, you know, on a normal aspect. But, so we're doing that in-house, is that what I heard you say?
We have a, we have our instruction managers and inspectors that we have, like, for example, we're doing our in-house management with that with Fire Station Number 1, where we have our staff out there that is inspecting it and making sure that it's in compliance. We'd be looking to do the same, should the, as we go through this project with the library, go towards construction manager at risk. It's not solidified as that, but then we're bringing forth the idea to help keep this project moving and continue to go forward, there is the opportunity to explore that as we go on.
One other quick thing is when we have our people out there doing, do we charge our time back into the bond issue on that, their time?
If I understand your question correctly, no, that's just part of the overall issuance of the bond for that particular project. That's the cost of it.
We do reimburse, we do that accounting, we credit back from the bond proceeds for our time. We do that.
For our staff.
That's an administrative transfer that we do over to the projects department.
Okay. Any other question or comment from counsel? Here and then, we do have motion circuit on floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed 6 to 0.
Moving to new business item number three. Councilmember Little, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000M-177, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report?
So Mayor, this is the second reading for a rezoning request from property owners off of Old Alvin, wanting a R1 zoning district. And this is from the current General Commercial. And I believe this had, one had the positive recommendations from staff and the P&amp;Z for...
Counselor, have any question or comment on this item?
I do, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
So I'm trying to understand a little bit more on why this would be requested to go into the in-city mud when there's water sewer lines already along Old Alvin. Maybe Mr. Mueller can answer that.
Alan Mueller, 1408 Bent Lake here in Pearland. Yeah, I think, you know, since the very beginning, you know, in-city muds in the city, they have always been set up so that the city utilities were kept to be city utilities. That was the intent, so that it would be seamless and you wouldn't have a bunch of individual systems. That's always been the idea. So that, really, the in-city muds really are a financing mechanism that help deliver lots in a cost-effective manner. And so on, you know, any property that you're developing, you have water, sewer, drainage, and retention costs. And by being able to count on getting some reimbursement from the mud in the future, you're able to mitigate the risk of developing that property and sell the lots at a lower cost.
And Member Owens and Council, if I could, you know, that whole in-city mud or not question would be separate from the rezoning, but I think it's fair to at least flag that for future consideration that they're going to be seeking that. You know, and as we've tried to note in the budget, and we're going to be highlighting a little bit further, there is an impact to the city in terms of, there's a reimbursement for in-city muds, was 15 cents, now it's down to 10 cents. But we have to issue additional debt service on our debt service levy to pay that back. So it does impact, you know, the entire city and our financials when we have these in-city muds with reimbursement like that.
Okay. Any other question from counsel on this item?
Yeah, so the plan is you're, we approve an R1, you're going to come back with a cluster, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, and what's the estimate of the number of lots you're going to?
Bear with me, I'll grab my notes.
I'm bearing.
And the development would be with, as an R1 zoning district?
In the packet, it says 73 lots, but I don't know if that's R3 or R1.
Yeah, and of course, the piece of paper that I need is not here, but yeah, that's the way it works. It'd be, well, at 3.2 per acre, it's 76 lots. That's correct. So at R1, that would be the max, would be 76. It may be something less than that, depending on how things lay out.
What's the lot width you're going to go with in the cluster?
We're anticipating a 60-foot width.
Okay. And then the cluster is going to include amenitized ponds?
May or may not have amenitized ponds. It will have amenities, but the ponds themselves may not be amenitized.
Any other question?
Let me just clarify, by amenitized, they'll be decorated in some way, there may or may not be a wet-bottom pond, I guess, if that's the question.
Amenitized similar to Highland Park?
It could be something similar to Highland Park, yes. We're just, we can't commit at this point to having a lake.
Yeah, not amenitized to Highland Glen, but Highland Park.
More than likely, yes, sir. More than likely, yes, sir.
Any other question or comment? The secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed 6 to 0.
Moving to new business item number 4, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000-M-178, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request by the applicant developer for Lake Park. This is at Cullen and McCard Northeast Corner that's just starting up and beginning to be occupied. They actually come back for an amendment to the PD for a sign for their project, since this is a PD that is dictated by the PD. They've actually asked for a smaller sign, so they have to go through this process and that's why it's due in this form. When it came to the P&amp;Z, they deadlocked and had no recommendation, so they sent, that functions as a denial. And so that, if the council chooses to approve this, you'll need a supermajority to do that tonight.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on this item?
I have a question. So by supermajority, do we need, all of, all of the council members need to vote in the affirmative for this to pass?
And that is correct.
And the only thing that is, they're asking to change is the, the appearance of the sign, correct?
That is correct. It's actually, they're going with a smaller sign than what they previously proposed.
We're not changing any uses, we're not changing any lot sizes, we're not changing any amenities, nothing in the development agreement, there's nothing but the lot and the sign, correct?
Yes, sir.
Nothing changed. I think it's appropriate to change the size on that a little bit. It, out there looking at it, it's appropriate. Council, any further question, comment?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Is there a representative here?
He lives in Louisiana, so he's probably, won't be able to make it, but...
So in the write-up, it, it states that P&amp;Z voted it down, voted 1 to 5. Did they offer any commentary?
Let the development staff try to explain that. I apologize, I said it was deadlocked, that's my understanding, so if it was...
Yeah, the vote was 1 to 5. They weren't impressed with the development as it stood, early, so those were the comments that came out of it. And they chose to vote 1 to 5 on it.
So it wasn't specifically about the sign or the design of the sign, that was a commentary, or y'all, your understanding is a commentary about the condition of the current development?
Much to do about a sign.
There was not much discussion about the sign itself.
This is much to do about a sign, but it looks better now than it did before, I'd say.
I guess the other question, we've tabled this before at the request of the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
And I assumed, the message, I believe, if I remember if this is the right one, he was in a wreck on the way here and said, "Table it, I want to be here." Now we've tabled it at his request, and now we've, we're seeing it again and he's not here?
Correct. It was our understanding that he would, he did ask for this to be moved from the last meeting, it was our understanding he would be here tonight.
Okay. Does the council have any further question or comment?
I wish, I wish I had more to go on what P&amp;Z had to say. I mean, it was a, I don't know, only one, one person was for this? And I, I don't know.
I thought last time when we went over this, the concern was the size of the sign.
It's one of the much-to-do-about-a-sign that I think is, now it's much more appropriate than it was before, and I think it's something that, like, Philip Good out there, I think would be proud of it. Any other question or comment?
I'd like to find out some more on that. Because I was thinking last time when they talked about that, and of course, he couldn't make it, but it was the size of the sign that was a big concern at that time.
When you said the concern, I mean, this is what they're asking for here. It's slightly smaller, as been stated, and, you know, P&amp;Z looked at that, they didn't apparently talk a lot about the sign itself, but this is what we're, changing it to this is what's before you tonight.
The tree will be a little smaller.
And just so you know that there was some discussion, I believe, at the Plan Zoning Commission. I think there's also been some concern with respect to this particular development and maybe the developer following through with what was originally projected for that development and the type of development, and not necessarily following through with those plans. And I think there were some concerns there that overflowed into this decision at the end.
I guess that's my point. If they have concerns, this is the last, this will be the last time council has any input at all.
There'll be another opportunity. There are some changes that he will be making with regard to residential versus commercial usage as it's kind of been created on the ground, as it's come to fruition, that he'll, we're going to ask him to come back and clean up the PD before we allow him to go to the next phase. So there, there will be another opportunity for you to, to look at this.
Will that be before the second reading of this?
Uh, no, not, that would be totally separate from the sign issue.
Should this be tabled for later discussion?
Whatever y'all feel is appropriate, sir.
Well, if he's going to come back, why don't we just throw this into whatever amendment he's got to make to the rest of the PD and not overcomplicate things?
I think his main concern was, just as a, as a marketing tool, the neighborhood is open, he is renting places now, people are moving in, and he wanted to get the sign up and wanted the new sign versus what was originally approved. And he, he does already have this sign completely constructed, it's just not on-site.
Well, that's, that's not my fault.
Completely his, understood, just...
So, I mean, I, I think there's some consternation, you know, whether we deem it appropriate or not, maybe that's, maybe we vote to table this and give him instruction to include this in the PD amendment, and it's additional motivation for him to come back with the PD amendment.
Or we table it and give him a chance to show up?
Well, it's, table and, table or table, I mean, let's, I guess, I would say I move to table.
It's not an essential portion of the development, so it can always be decided sometime.
I believe it'd be a postponement, so I'll make the motion to postpone this item for a future date.
Second. And just to clarify for the record, normally, if, if there's not a, we prefer that we say either at the next regular meeting or at some time in the future, and based on the conversation, I think, do you, you want staff to find out when the individual can be here, or do we want to move it to the next meeting? And then if the individual shows up, then...
What we're saying is, what I'm suggesting is we table the issue and allow him to move this into the PD amendment, but no certain time for him to return as opposed to postpone to a definitive time for which he needs to come back.
It's not a holding up its development.
Well, my only concern with that is that what you're doing is you're, because this would then be, still be a pending item, and so I think that it would be better to take action on this item up or down and then allow him to still request it as part of the new, of the next amendment as opposed to leaving this one.
It's 6 to 1. I mean, we vote it down and tell him, but we communicate to him that he can include it with the PD amendment. I think it just looks better as a council that we table it as opposed to vote it down and then come back and approve it later.
Well, until the next, the next regular meeting, and if the sign's important, he'll show up, we can, we can talk to the points and then we can vote it up or down.
Okay, well, we have a motion to table that's already moved and seconded, so we need to do something about that?
And that's, the reason I was interjecting to that point was because I think we prefer, if we're going to postpone an item to a future agenda, we prefer to have it specified as to which agenda that would be, and if it's going to be the next agenda, that could be included in that motion.
I believe, Member Carbone has made a motion and I will second it.
What was, what was Carbone's motion?
I believe actually, Councilmember Hernandez originally made a motion that I believe was seconded as well.
Yeah, but he did not include a certain date.
Okay. Motion.
Make a motion to postpone this item until the next regular meeting.
There we go.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor of that motion? Secretary, did you get that?
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
This is for the table.
Yes, sir. Postpone.
Postpone it.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed 4 to 2. Postpone until next regular council meeting.
4 to 3 to postpone?
4 to 2.
4 to 2. Okay, let's see what we do at item 5. Councilmember Owens, would you do the honor? Set on the agenda for, table for us.
Yeah, let me, let me turn my mic on. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000-M-176, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion. Staff report.
All right, so this is a second reading, and this is another rezoning for residential. This is off of Roy Road. Again, moving from General Commercial to R1 zoning district, and I believe, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but this is the one that had the 3-3 deadlock at P&amp;Z. So, no, a negative recommendation and need another supermajority from the council if you decide to move forward on this.
Okay, the council, council have any question or comment on this item?
I'll make a comment. You know, I commented on the other development over off of Old Alvin about being in a mud. And, you know, I understand with this one a little bit better why it would be in the mud with, you know, water sewer lines not being out to this area. So, I'm more in favor of this one than I was of the other one.
At item 5.
Mayor, apologies for my, having to excuse myself. We do have a number of people that would like to come up and speak on this item, so I'll call them up in order, in order which I receive them. So first up, it's Mr. Alan Mueller. You know the drill.
Sir?
Three minutes.
I will not use my full three minutes.
You know the drill.
Alan Mueller, 1408 Bent Lake here in Pearland. Just, very briefly, just to reiterate, you know the history of this property and the folks not being able to sell or develop for many, many years as, as it currently is zoned. You know, it's, it's an area that's kind of difficult to decide what the right thing to do is, but I think but for some of those businesses that are out there that were built 50 years ago before it was annexed, you know, this would be totally a residential area. So that's really the only thing that I think enters some of the questions into it. So, again, we would hope that you would continue to support this. This does require the supermajority, so I'm hoping we have our sixth person here back in a moment. And if it doesn't look like that, we'll, we'll ask you to table it, and we will be here when you ask us to, if we ask you to table it, we would be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Larry Morgan. Please state your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments, three minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Larry Morgan, 2430 Roy Road, Pearland, Texas. Again, brief history on the property, in the early 60s, the house was built on this property. In the late 60s, my parents purchased the property. I went through the Pearland school systems, elementary, junior high, high school. In the late 90s, my dad decided it was time to retire, and I purchased the property. He used the funds to assist in his retirement from the sale of the property. Just a couple of years prior to this, City of Pearland annexed the property. At that time, when I purchased, it was residential, single-family dwelling. Just as of recently, it was brought to my attention that it's no longer residential. After seeing the adjacent properties being unsuccessful and being able to sell, I now have concerns that with my plans and goals to sell the property in six and a half years, I may not be able to, and thus not be able to use the funds to assist in my retirement like my dad did. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, Ms. Fay Osmus. You'll please keep, give us your name and address for the purpose of the record, and then please keep your comments, three minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Fay Osmus, 13185 Bluffew Drive, Willis, Texas. Councilman and mayor. I'm here on behalf of Mrs. Porter and Mr. Lance. I've marketed their property, it's been on the market for a very long time. I've marketed on probably most every commercial and residential website that you can find, LoopNet, CoStar, Comgate, CityFeet, LandWatch, I mean, it's been out there. And all the interest we have gotten has been residential. We've gotten a lot of residential interest, and once we get to the contract, they're like, "Oh, if we can't rezone, you know, we don't want to go through it." So, we're asking you to please zone it as a residential so that we can sell the property and they can use the money for their retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mr. Louis Lentz. Please give us your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments, three minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
My name is Louis Lentz. I live at 5119 Briar Bend, Houston, Texas.
Please speak in the microphone, please.
Okay, and you, you want me to start over?
No, it's fine.
We can hear all here now.
Okay, now, my mother and dad bought the property in the early 60s, and we are now, we've been trying to sell the property for 20 years without success with it zoned as commercial. We would like to zone it as residential. I would appreciate your consideration, and I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Mary Beth Porter. Please give us your name and address for the purpose of the record, and keep your comments, three minutes.
Sure. Mary Beth Porter, 815 Woodbridge Circle, Sugar Land, Texas, 77498. Mainly, I wanted to thank everybody for the mayor, our mayor and the councilman for listening to our story for the past three or four times, and others who live on Roy Road, so we'll call it the Roy Road Story. Our property has been for sale for 20 years. During that 20 years, we've had many contracts, all residential. We would like to rezone to residential, and we certainly appreciate your consideration for that. Thank you. Vote residential.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, that's all the public comments that I received.
Councilor, any other question or comment? Is this what?
Similar comments, Alan. I can borrow you for a second. You've agreed to go to an R1, but I assume you plan to go with a cluster?
That's correct. So, yeah, and at 3.2, that would be 77 lots on this one, it's about the same size as the other tract.
Okay, and then 60-foot lots on this as well?
That's correct.
And then amenitized pond?
Uh, this one, more than likely, the pond would be in the front, and so we're anticipating this would be a lake in the front. No, you know, won't know for sure, but that's the initial ideas, is that it would be a lake.
Thank you.
While, while we're on this, this is kind of off-topic, but if, what would be the price difference in the home if you were not to go into a mud?
Um, typical mud reimbursement, you know, it comes over time, but the different, the, you get back somewhere between $18,000 and $24,000 a lot is what you typically get reimbursed.
Thank you.
Member Owens?
This has been sitting vacant for a long time. If it's going to be commercial, it's got to be commercial on it. I think, you know, it's time to take some kind of movement on it and let them be able to go ahead and sell it, develop it. able to go ahead and sell it, develop it. Um, put the houses out there, give us a little bit more revenue coming in of what we need to do, but also give them an opportunity to sell their property and go ahead and develop it. Uh, it's been sitting out there vacant for a long time and it's off the main road on, on Broadway here, 518. And so there's not been anybody out there that, uh, come to look at it as a commercial, it's all residential is what they want to do. So I'm in, in, uh, in it now to say, hey, you know, I'm going to vote, go ahead and vote for it.
I've been doing my best to educate myself on zoning and so forth the past couple of months and I understand the, the reasoning for zoning. I, I don't think that reasoning is strong enough to deny you the opportunity to derive benefit from this property, so I'm very much looking forward to giving you some, some relief and, and hopefully a happy future. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay. I'd like to say to attorney to clarify our recommend, we, this would require a super vote and would you explain what reason for that, we'll all understand that.
Yes, Mayor, in this particular case, it will require a super majority of the council. In this case, that means all six council members that are here this evening would have to support, uh, the request to go to R1. That is being triggered by the fact that the vote with the Planning and Zoning Commission was a 3-3 tie, so there was not a positive recommendation, which is the trigger for the super majority requirement.
Okay. Any other question or comment from the council at this point? Here you none, uh, I think we missed the secretary, I think we have a motion second on the floor for an R1.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, let me see here. You've been at item number six, back to you, Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action, resolution R 2018 dash 212, so move.
Second.
Have a motion second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, sir, this is another, uh, long anticipated and needed capital improvement and that's for a, a new fire station number eight. This will be, again, be on the north side of Shadow Creek Parkway, west of 288, uh, provide additional resources and services to a large portion of the community. Definitely a station that's, uh, been needed and with this, we hope to have this occupied towards the end of 2019. The item before you tonight is the design contract and this is actually a construction manager at risk program. We've shared on several occasions the background on that approach and, uh, the pros and cons of that. I believe it is appropriate for this case and, uh, went through and vetted different firms and are recommending, uh, DROTEC for this. They've got experience with fire stations and with construction manager at risk specifically, so very comfortable with the recommendation to you. The contract tonight is actually technically only for the $10,000, but I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page because this is really getting us formalized and off and running for this project and, uh, you know, it's, it's going to start a lot of work to, uh, then lead to these other contracts and so forth. So, uh, wanted to make sure we brought this to you formally and, uh, again, made sure we're all consistent on the same page for moving forward. So, ask for your consideration on this design for the fire station tonight.
Okay, this council have any question or comment at this point? I think you've gone through the due process pretty well, where we've been to start building, it's going to hold up pretty good.
I have a comment. Is this construction manager at risk, single person, one employee?
It's a firm, I mean, DROTEC, is that the question, I'm sorry, if I understood? I mean, Robert, you want to, it's a full-on deep company.
Okay, and, and they advocate on behalf of the city, is that correct? To make sure things are going well with the construction of the fire station?
They're, they're an actual contractor, general contractor that has their business plan set up around what's alternative procurement, which is construction manager at risk. And so they have that and they are, um, that process, so they will be doing some of the work. But then as part of that, as per the statutes is that any work that they, they do not perform, they need to bid that job out. So they'll bid out, advertise, just like the city would advertise in the newspaper for two times and then open bids publicly and then look at those and bring those forth as best value for the project. So there is an opportunity at that time for any of our local contractors and subs to participate in that project as well.
Does anybody from the city oversee, um, the project at any point in time in here to ensure that we're, costs aren't going through the roof? A lot of times I know we get, somebody always comes back to us needing a change order for something because the cost is more than what was expected. So, you know, I just want to make sure that somebody is overseeing this project from, you know, some level that, you know, we don't end up with a whole bunch of change orders on, on this.
Councilman Moore, uh, in the packet as well, there's a presentation I'd put together on construction manager at risk. But through the process of bringing in a, uh, construction manager contractor this early, this in the stage, they're looking at the plans, asking questions, providing constructability reviews, open book, uh, construction estimates. And then at what we dictate or required in our SOQ for them and proposal is to provide a guaranteed maximum price at 90%. That means that is the maximum amount that they would charge for that project. So there would, if there's anything that they make a mistake on that makes the project go over, that is their fault. Uh, if there is any savings associated with a better way to build something during the construction process, that savings belongs to the city.
It says the guaranteed maximum price is negotiable based on budget scope, schedule and all that, but that's all done prior to, at that 90% completion of the, the plans, the design, correct?
That is correct, that is after.
Not something that's negotiable during the, okay.
Uh, that is correct, Councilmember Hernandez, is that, that is done during that process when they bid the job, they bid their subcontractors out, they're brought forth, we look at best value, put that proposal together. If it's within budget and it covers everything we need, or if it's over budget and then we need to go back and take a look at things to bring things out to get it within the budget, then that is what is done. And then that final cost is brought forth as a guaranteed maximum price. With, uh, that, the contractor is guaranteeing that he will not go over if he does and of course, that is his, his burden to bear.
If I could interject, uh, you know, the questions that councils ask sort of get to, uh, why this approach has been selected, it does, uh, you know, as opposed to a traditional contract bid, uh, you know, it does get us into the beginnings with the contractor and so we're there elbow to elbow and the city will be there managing and supervising and overseeing, uh, but the construction manager risk by definition, you know, gets us that closer to a fixed price and, and, uh, you know, better budget stability for the whole project. So, uh, Mr. Coker's mentioned, you know, this is, uh, been used more and more in public realm and, uh, it's not a, you know, something brand new, it's, it's a proven approach and, uh, we believe it's the best one for the city financially and to deliver the, the end product to us.
And is it, I guess it's my understanding that, that also allows us to negotiate more of like the individual elements versus the lowest responsible bidder basis, which is more like this is the project, what can, what can you give us? Instead gives us the ability to work with the contractor to give us maybe the best amenities available or what have you for whatever that price is.
That is correct. That's that partnership, it's an open book process, so we can see through what is being charged, how that's set aside. That's why we negotiate upfront, as you did with this package, a percent markup that is associated with each of those and that's that 2.85%.
I believe, to me, the alternative is sort of like a value engineering where you do that at the end and then nobody really feels good about it because you're not getting as much as you thought you would. With this, you're doing that value, I believe, sort of as you're going along at the beginning.
Council have any other question or comment?
I, I just say, I think the CIP at risk is a, it, it's a good process for us to start following. Gives us more control. Uh, it doesn't necessarily guarantee us the lowest price, but I think we've had enough problems with the low bidder in the past that, uh, this is a good time for us to transition out of it. And I appreciate staff putting in the diligence to go with this. I'd also comment that, um, just for the purpose of the record, the architect on this project is a client of mine that I've done a lot of business with in the past. This contract is not with them, so I'll be, uh, or the provisions of the other ordinance, I'll be able to vote on it. Uh, but I think it's important to note that Joiner is a client.
So we got roughly half a million dollars contingency in here?
That contingency that you're talking about is in the CIP budget is what you're talking about, but with regards to that, um, the construction cost that we have is budgeted and then, like I said, we would, we're negotiating under the construction once we know what the costs are as we develop those and move forward and proceed from that point to guarantee, to a guaranteed maximum price.
You know, this is not our first fire station. I think we've learned an awful lot of things about how to build, what we need to factor into them and, uh, modern technology is being considered as well, so I think that's a great location, too. Any other question or comment from council? I don't hear any. Have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, you've been at item seven, Councilmember Perez, would you do the other?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action, resolution number R 2018 dash 198, so move.
Second.
I think this is a, a bunch of smart moves like this where we are saving money and we're getting more effective service. Any question or comment from council, any more? Staff have any wrap up comments?
Sounds like you covered it very well, Mayor. We're, uh, gonna be abandoning one of the sewer lift stations. Uh, you, you saw in the Thursday packet, we sent out a few weeks going in advance, uh, you know, the big picture of how we're approaching this, so it's going to help our long-term maintenance costs, uh, to be able to, to do this.
Good. Any other question come from council?
I just like seeing that there are people that stay here for the whole meeting. So, thank you all.
When you, when you, when the TV wears out, you got to go someplace to have a gun, don't you? I think we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone is absent from the chamber, motion passed five to zero.
Moving to new business item eight, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action for resolution number R 2018 dash 192, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and some kind of a second. Staff report.
So this is a budgetary housekeeping item we do each year at the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, we've got an adopted budget and CIP, uh, we're beginning those projects network. This, uh, allows us to reimburse ourselves when we actually issue the debt financing for these items, uh, so just, uh, we have to have this in place at the beginning of the year.
Okay, council have any question to comment? Make it make sense. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone is absent from the chamber. Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving our agenda to item number eight, mayor and council issues for future city council agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I'd like to see if there's any, um, support to discuss the height, um, for building ground up above the floodplain for developments. I know we've got, uh, one development going in right now off of McLean and Magnolia and it is, uh, it seems to be setting up extremely high. It's much higher than, uh, all the ground sitting around it and, uh, um, we have a lot of things in UDC where we're concerned about aesthetics of the city, but yet we've got this development that's coming in, that's building, you know, four or five feet above the ground level and, uh, I, I just, I have concerns that if we, uh, we, we don't do something about that now, that in the future, every new development that builds is going to be as high as they want to, they want to be, because right now we don't have a max limit for it. So, I, I would like to see if there's, uh, any support in, uh, discussion, discussing that at a future, um, meeting.
Okay, so, anyone else have any ideas for agenda item? I have one other, Mayor.
Mayor, if I could just procedurally, uh, believe the process would be that somebody needs to endorse that, so we'll tee it up for a future council discussion and get you a little bit of background and, you know, go from there. It's not obligating anybody to decide anything, but just if there's interest to, uh, discuss that.
We just need another council member to second that discussion.
I guess procedurally, is this the forum? Is this, I, I thought we discussed where, I mean, is this the, the free-for-all where we throw everything and staff on the agenda? I thought this was limited to, uh, other items that would.
That's what I thought too, but I asked before the meeting, so.
Yeah, I think.
I was told I could bring it up, so.
This one where I think, this where you introduce those things and, and bring them up, uh, so, picked up from wrong here.
Well, if, if you look at the, the council proceed, rules of procedures, um, for instance, it contemplates actually a request in writing and then of course, seconded by a council member, which can be submitted in writing. And then once that's received, it would be placed on this slot in the agenda for the discussion at that council meeting, um, as opposed to actually putting them on the agenda at this meeting. So, I mean, but, uh, I guess if, if council, if the council member wanted to submit it by an email and if it's seconded by a council member, then it would appear in this spot on the future agenda. That's, I believe, is that's what you're referring to, council member?
Yes, sir. Was that an answer, yes or no? That was a lie.
Well.
There's a reason you're an attorney.
Yeah, it, well, I believe, uh, there was a point in time where we, it was used in this manner and then when we last looked at the council rules of procedure, it was contemplated that those would be submitted in writing by a council member and a second council member supporting that item and then it would be placed in this slot on the agenda for the discussion.
Okay, then I withdraw and I'll send an email.
Hey, when we update the rules, we can change the words on this too, because I read this and it says for future city council, but we can fix that.
Well, look, it, just as, for the gentlemanly purpose, you brought it up, it's in the council, it's in the open forum. Is there, is there any other council member that wants to second the discussion so we don't have to go through a sort of procedure? We know that in the future, we don't want to do it this way, but is there any other second to discuss that item? A little like it.
Any other agenda items? The council? Staff can enter some too, if you'd like. If not, I'll move down to the next items of the business, there is none. And the, uh, end of the agenda says item nine, adjourn, and I shall so do at 8:10.